Your son, Jesus' name. By the power of the Holy Spirit, we thank you. Amen, amen, and amen.
Thank you, Dr. Wright.
You're welcome.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhardt.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our August the 4th regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Purcell.
President. I've not been able to open those up, so I was not able to review them at this time, so I cannot have a motion.
Anyone else? We'll hold them until next meeting, then.
So nobody could open them?
Could nobody else open them?
Okay. I'll tell you.
It's funny, everybody at the city building can, so I don't understand why, but I'll figure it out.
Okay.
No, I can't.
If somebody would tell me before the meeting, we could fix it.
I can't either.
Presentations, petitions, memorials, complaints, do we have any of those to come before us right now? Hearing none. Resolution.
Yes, wait.
We do have one?
Complaint.
Come forward, please.
She needs to have been scheduled to do that.
Should have, huh? Yes, she should have already.
Complaints.
Let's give her grace.
There's not public hearing on that yet.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Belinda Miller, and I'm coming up here tonight to talk about the rate of the storm, drains and the sewage.
Okay, when we come to that, we'll call for you to come up and speak at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution number five, 2025.
Do you want me to read it? Sometimes they don't. Resolution five, 2025, a resolution authorizing the investment of public funds into certificates of deposit pursuant to Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.
Evening, Council and Council President. My name is Tracy McGinnis. I'm the City Controller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tracy.
Resolution five dash 2025 is an annual housekeeping resolution related to the city's investment program. This resolution allows banks outside of the political subdivision to submit quotes on public fund certificates of deposits, and it authorizes the City Controller to invest in the certificates of deposit pursuant to Indiana Code 51395. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, you mentioned banks outside of basically our jurisdiction.
Yes, sir.
Does this also allow for competitive bidding within?
Yes, sir, it does. We currently have four local institutions that are carrying four CDs, and then we have four non-local institutions that are also carrying four CDs. And just for your general information, right now, our market value at the seven, at 731 was sixteen million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any additional questions? What is Council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution five, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and second for approval of Resolution number five, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Communications from the Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick comments. Twenty twenty-six budget committed the whole move to September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th if needed. Still waiting on some final numbers. A note of our neighbors next door, the County Council is considering the low hut this Wednesday at 6:00 P.M., and they're also considering a bond for the library. If adopted, a bond for the library will reduce the city's property tax revenue by about four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. It would hit against our caps, just information, so we need to beware what's happening and have a chance to speak if we want to. Update on branding and comprehensive plan, a brand guide is in the works. We went through the, the committee went through the sample, if you will, draft, draft brand plan. Once we have that, we'll share it with Council and other departments, and they'll know how to implement the brand, which again is more than a logo. And the comprehensive plan refresh continues. It is scheduled for initial introduction to the Plan Commission at a September 24th meeting right here in Council chamber. So it's progressing. They've got another month and a half of work to do, and that's their deadline to get it to the initial introduction. That's all I have.
Questions of the Mayor.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what is the city's administration's position on the wheel tax?
I spoke at the County Council meeting two weeks ago, and if the county adopts, I said if the county adopts a maximum tax, we would not push for any at all, but that would cause us to forfeit that last bit of lane miles from the third bucket, so we'll find out what the county adopts, and then we'll come back to Council and figure out the budget going forward. We're putting property tax dollars into the Street Department now. We never seem to have enough money for the match for community crossings. We'll have even less in the future when we lose motor vehicle highway funds, the way this all ferrets out, so we'll have to decide. We can't adopt the wheel tax this year anyways. August 31st is your deadline. So we'll have time to see how much we get from what the county implements for the county statewide and all the cities, and we'll have a chance to talk and work with Council and figure out, Street Department, how much we need to make up to keep us whole. Right now, we have 296 lane miles of streets, and we spent one point, what, we did 1.5 million on milling and paving this year, and that's not a lot. So we're, our streets are okay, but they're not great. And it all comes down to tax revenue to pay for paving. So we'll figure out and beat again.
Any additional questions of the Mayor at this time? Hearing none. Report of the Public Works and Safety, the minutes of July, the 17th, 24th, and 31st are in the packet. Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding these minutes? Hearing none. We have a report on community development by Lindsay Darnell.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. Lindsay Darnell, Community Development Coordinator. So for the past month in July, I have been updating our Boards and Commissions page on our website to be in compliance with the open door law that the state of Indiana passed. It is fully completed right now. I did have a delay in getting the members and term start and end dates updated while I was waiting for that information. And moving forward, the Clerk's Office, which holds as the records keeper for the city, will maintain the Boards and Commissions members and term dates. Is there any other questions? Oh, yes. Sorry. So we'll just start with Aviation Commission. I won't go through all of them, but I can show you members. It does list who they were appointed by, their term start and their term end dates. Board of Works. It lists other advisory commissions that they are on as well. And then going to Council members. Mr. Engel. It does list the 2025 commissions that you have been appointed to by Council, and then the 2025 committees as well. So all of the Council members are updated as well on here with your commissions and committees that you are on.
Let's see that.
Scroll down a little bit, let's see. There he is.
That's a good picture.
You're just a happy jolly one.
Yeah, it is.
Let's leave that on. And then you will update the fact that I'm, I've also been appointed to the WCTV Board.
Okay, I was unaware of that, but yes, I can update that.
How does that information come to you?
So I guess what Karen was telling me was they used to keep records of all of the members and their terms from each Boards and Commissions in the past, but...
The Boards did that, or the Commissions?
Yeah, they would submit the information to Karen for her to keep record, and I guess years ago, it just kind of stopped. So for the past month of July, Kim Vessels, the Assistant Attorney for the city, had sent out a first email to all of the Boards and Commission members, letting them know about the open door law. I had followed up with three other emails to obtain the information, so I could have it accurate and updated on our website. It was a little bit of a process to get all of that information, but I was able to get it done. We did have a meeting with Mr. Parker last week on Wednesday, and Mr. Goss was there. So the city's Clerk's Office will maintain the records moving forward of each Board and Commission with their members and their term dates.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On my profile, it shows that I'm on the UEA Board, but when you look under UEA, my name is not there. You might want to update that.
So with those Boards, we are redirecting to their website. As you're just appointed to them, they're not an actual government board.
Right, right, but you have everybody else's on there, Mr. Purcell's.
Let me just double check. I might have accidentally missed that one, and I can definitely update that either later tonight or tomorrow morning. I apologize.
No problem.
I must have missed Picture Day.
Yes, that was actually brought up in our...
You ditched. You ditched, Justin.
When you request it.
Well, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'm actually looking through them now, and they're greatly updated from the last time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Two weeks ago, when they were totally not current. I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay has done a real good job on this and trying to update it and get it going, and trying to make Mr. Engel happy. It's very, very difficult to do.
That's never going to be easy, but I, I do think it's important, because if we, as a city, are sending people to our website for information, it ought to be accurate and ought to be up to date. That's all I'm saying.
And I'm, I'm sure in the future it will be.
Thank you.
Is there any miscellaneous business to come from Council right now? Hearing none. Ordnance is on first reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I move to suspend the rules and advance ordinances on first reading to title only.
Second.
Have a motion and second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number thirty-six and thirty-seven.
There you go.
By title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number thirty-six, 2025, a general ordinance adopting Indiana Code 5-13, public-private agreements and taking certain other action thereto.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Park Superintendent, happy to be here tonight. I just wanted to highlight that in the title, it should read 5-23. And also, sorry about that. And I just wanted to come before Council just to talk through the opportunity that we have before you. Hopefully, you were able to read both memos that were provided to you. The first memo that I provided was in regards to the gorge activation project and the phases that we have, along with the location, the funding, and the deadlines that we have. In that memo, I did talk about the process of the build-operate-transfer-delivery method and the importance of that for the gorge project. In the second memo, Butler Fairman and Seifert has provided you a memo. They are an expert when it comes to the build-operate-transfer-delivery method, and also helped provide the ordinance, which is ordinance thirty-six, 2025. Legal counsel has reviewed this ordinance, and also we talked through this process and talking through, taking the certain action. And what this ordinance actually does is just allows us to be able to utilize this method, open up the code, and be able to utilize this for any project within the city. This is just taking us to the next step, being able to allow us to do that. And if this is something that we decide to do in the future, then we would be actually going to Park Board for that, opening up an RFQ process and going through that method. So we do have BFNS here, Ryan and Spencer, to answer any questions that you might have. I wanted to make sure that you felt very comfortable with this process, since this is something that you would be opening up the code and in approving with this ordinance. And also, I know AJ does have some information in case you do have any questions as well. And we also attended Finance Committee as well tonight.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying throughout that this should read code 5-23-5?
No, just 5-23 on the title on, that she presented.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from Council at this time? Hearing none. What is Council's pleasure?
Finance Committee have a...
Pardon me?
Does Finance Committee have...
Finance Committee report?
Mr. President, so not all Finance Committee members were present. There were a lot of questions. Denise, Ryan, Spencer did a great job facilitating the discussion, answering the questions. There, there was some concern on, on various levels of transparency and Council's commitment or control as this presents itself in the future with other departments. So Finance Committee has no recommendation on this.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would just add, and I don't know if this was discussed in Finance Committee, I was unable to make it, but following the RFPQ process, when a committee determines that there should be a selection, or at least a recommendation for a selection, that would have to come back in each and every instance to Council for their approval. So this isn't a blanket approval for any project with a specific developer. You will see this again in the future at the back end of the process, so just wanted to point that out for Council's consideration.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, that was one of our concerns, was if we would see this again, or if these projects could move forward without us actually being involved in approving the monies. And so you're saying no, that it will come back to us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that in mind, what is Council's pleasure?
Hold it and come back on second reading.
Okay. We'll hold it, then.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, 2025, an ordinance establishing a fire merit commission.
Good evening, Council members.
Good evening.
Mr. Parker. The Richmond Fire Department asks the common Council approve ordinance thirty-seven dash 2025. An ordinance established a merit commission for purposes of member hiring, promotion, and discipline, which is intended to produce transparent, effective, and productive department. This is by law, I have to bring this back to the Council from last year, because you guys turned it, fourteen oh eight, and you guys turned it down unanimously, but you guys put it on pause to come to this year, but since it was turned down, I have to reestablish the ordinance, and we have to go through this again. They have one year from their last vote. They vote on October 31st of last year, so I'm getting this out front. So we're already working on the process with local fourteen oh eight, and I've shared the first draft with AJ on the merit stuff that we're working on, anticipation this moves forward.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just for a point of clarity, if my memory serves me correctly, we were asked to vote no.
Right.
So we didn't...
Right, but since it was by law, since it was turned down last year, it has to be resubmitted and go through the process again.
But the way, the way that you presented it, I, I felt like we needed that clarity, that we were asked to vote no.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, that way you guys did, I'm just saying by the state, it was turned down. And I have to, every year it's turned down, I have to come resubmit. That's where I'm at. I'm resubmitting from, for next, for 2026.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
What pay grades will be included in this merit promotion system if approved?
What, pay grades?
Yes.
Firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, and we're working on, in the battalion chief as well.
Okay, I would prefer to see the battalion chiefs, obviously.
Oh, I've already put, we've already worked hard on that, as far as to make sure that there's proper things in for the battalion chief as well.
And then I notice in here that you state that, and I assume that this is a document that's common, not specific to our department.
This is the ordinance that legal did for me.
And I see in there that if an outside chief is hired and removed, that he is dismissed from his position? He is not.
Right.
Brought onto the fire department?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from Council? We'll sign this to the Safety Committee. Thank you.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Yes, please.
This one I sent separately, because I wasn't sure we were going to have it finished, but I put it on the agenda, so we could hear it. But it's the general ordinance submitting section thirty-two point ninety-nine of the Richmond City Code. And it's, it's the procedures that we follow to make sure that all the agendas, minutes are done properly. That meet with your approval, Bill?
Would be nice.
We're trying.
Ordinance number twelve is on second reading, which is public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of ordinance number twelve, 2025? Is there anyone like to speak in opposition? What is Council's pleasure?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, I believe that when we met last week, that there was supposed to be an amendment to this.
Paragraph B was what we changed.
What paragraph B?
On the first page, A B.
Okay.
That's what was changed, to reflect that the Secretary of all Boards and Commissions, blah, 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 either created by city resolution, ordinance agreement, or state law, they must electronically furnish all the notices, agendas, and minutes and memorandum to the Clerk's Office and enter into an appropriate document management database, no longer, no later than five days after the minutes and/or memorandum have been approved by the respective body. That meets your...
Procedural question, should this be reintroduced as...
Excuse me, Doug has the floor.
I'm sorry.
So that isn't what it read when it was originally presented to us? So we need to make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yes. And I, I can't recite what you just read to me, but...
But you're amending section B as, as presented?
As presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to amend section B as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Purcell.
The question was just answered procedurally.
Yes. Move for engrossment.
Second.
Have a motion to engross. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
Mr. Engel.
I believe there was a concern among some on Council about the abilities of the secretaries for the various boards and commissions to actually handle this.
That's why they're giving everything to the Clerk's Office, and we're going to make sure it's...
That's why we just amended it.
That's what that paragraph said.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Call the question.
Call the question, please.
Second.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Ann Taylor.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt.
Aye.
Jerry Purcell.
Nay.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Motion carried.
Ordinance number thirty-five, 2025, and ordinance amending ordinance number fifty-four, 2022.
Okay, ordinance number thirty-five is the sanitary ordinance for that lady back there that was interested in it. Does come, does Council have any questions or comments before we go to the public? Hearing none. Ordinance number thirty-five is on second reading and public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Council. Valerie Schaefer, 900 Northeast Street. I'm the president of the Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County. And I just want to share with you that over the years, the EDC's Industrial Park Committee, we've done extensive research into determining the best location to either expand an existing industrial park or to establish a new industrial park. This was necessary, because at the time, Wayne County did not have any industrial development sites larger than forty-two acres, which limited our ability to compete for numerous project leads that we were receiving from the state. So no matter what area we considered for industrial park expansion, the committee determined that there would be major infrastructure upgrades that would be needed to support industrial growth in Richmond. After utilizing an outside firm paid for by the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, we were able to validate that the recommendation from the EDC's committee to expand the Midwest industrial park was, in fact, the most cost-effective option, because we could build off several infrastructure upgrades that were already made in and around the area to support growth of our industrial base. But we did know at that time that there would be sanitary sewer upgrades that would be needed to accommodate future growth. So at that time, we then proceeded with negotiations with the Tushlog and Talbot families for the acquisition of three hundred and thirty-five acres just south of Guard Jackson Road and south of the existing Midwest industrial park. And we closed on that land in September of 2022, thanks to the support from the City of Richmond and the Wayne County governments, who actually split the cost... who actually split the cost of that land acquisition. Shortly after, the Richmond Sanitary District began to evaluate the upgrades that would be needed in the area. It's important to know that this sewer project upgrade does not only support the Midwest Industrial Park, but it also supports the Northwest Industrial Park, which is located around the Northwest Eleventh Street and Progress Drive areas of Richmond. Every new project or expansion in both of these parks slowly chips away at the capacity that we have remaining. Recently, this has included the, the addition of Anchor Ingredients, Liberation Bio Industries, which will be coming online early next year, and the recent expansions of Blue Buffalo and Richmond Beverage Solutions. With so many industrial parks across Indiana and even the nation, it's important for us to stand out and truly have shovel-ready sites, meaning that we have all utilities in place and can, can support a company's needs, not only when they first establish an operation here, but as they continue to grow. So the first phase of this sanitary project will nearly triple the existing capacity that we have, that we have now, that will allow us a better capability of attracting new industry, while also supporting the growth of our existing businesses who have millions of dollars invested in our community. The two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day that we have now at capacity could easily be taken up by just one user today, especially if that were a food processor. So with your support of this rate increase, we'll be able to move forward with this sewer upgrade as planned that will allow us to continue marketing undeveloped land in and around the Midwest Industrial Park to companies that will accelerate high-quality job growth and create more economic opportunities for our community. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of council at this time?
Mr. President, without being...
Mr. Turner.
Without being specific, have we had interest shown in that site yet by outside development?
Absolutely, yes.
Numerous?
Numerous, numerous projects, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Engel.
Valerie, how much shovel-ready acreage do we have now?
Between the Gateway Industrial Park, north of Cambridge City, and the Midwest Park, we roughly have about five hundred acres of land, with the majority being in the Midwest Park.
But that's not shovel-ready? I'm, President?
Nearly shovel-ready. So the three hundred and thirty-five acres, since the acquisition, we've been working on making it shovel-ready. We had numerous structures that had to be demolished. We've had additional due diligence reports that we have engaged in. Next year, we need to complete the wetland delineation, and that will bring us to the shovel-ready status.
Any additional questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Valerie, you've been at this economic development for a long, long time now. Other than increasing user fees, can you think of any other alternative methods of helping to pay for this?
It's really tough. In today's world, as you know, you all are strained, and so any type of debt has to have a repayment source. And so, absent of any new repayment source, I don't know where that will come from. However, we were very intentional with the latest incentive to Blue Buffalo for their expansion, so that we were only pledging fifty percent of the new tax revenue derived from their project. So the TIF district will have a lot more funding in the future that we believe can pay for the last phase of this project, or help pay for it, will get us a lot closer to having cash on hand.
And we can't commit TIF money until there's an actual project there that's completed, right?
You just have to ensure that the revenue that's generated will be there in order to pay the debt.
President?
Yes, sir.
Just to bring a little clarity to that, the Blue Buffalo project will be yielding TIF revenue almost immediately, and so you can count on that. But obviously, that three hundred and twenty-five acre site won't produce anything until we've actually got a structure on it.
That's correct.
Less one year.
Yeah, right.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Engel.
I believe the EDC is committing dollars to this, this project, the sanitary sewer project?
We committed one million dollars from the Consolidated Edit Fund that went towards the engineering for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
One last question.
Okay.
Roughly, how much money have we got in this site to date?
Probably around four point five million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Please come forward, state your name and address.
That's Mike Rash, twelve sixty-five Clear Creek Lane, Richmond. I'm all in favor of, you know, the EDC and progress for the city of Richmond, there's no doubt about that. I'm a business owner, have been for almost forty-seven years. So I'm all about development, you know, for the better of everyone. But you can't just keep putting the burden on the people who depend on this. It's ridiculous, you know? Every time, I mean, we had a rate for increase already about restructuring the sanitary district, which we knew about, which was needed, there's no doubt about that. But every time you turn around, they're wanting to get more, 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 and more, really? Why? I mean, if that money is really used, I mean, the money that's used for the improvements of the sanitary district that was necessary, that's one thing. But to put it out there for us to pay for, when it's a business that's going to be using that, I don't think it's right. I think a business should be the one paying for the infrastructure, not the residents. So, anyway, that's how I feel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Marvin Smith, Dinger Road, Richmond. I just got one question. Does anybody on council know how much money was allotted to the city of Richmond out of our tax dollars many, many years ago, many years ago, to upgrade and maintain the sewer system? Does anybody in this room? Mr. Welch, before he passed away, said he didn't even know, and nobody else knows. Well, somebody's getting this money from our tax dollars, and I would like to know.
Mr. Smoker? Is there any possibility that you could go back and come up with all that? Because it's, there's been so many different projects that we've been, would be involved in this. I don't know how many different projects there have been, but... Maybe, maybe you can go back and tell and figure that out? Because it's so complicated, because you're talking about business, you're talking about industry, you're talking about residential, you're talking about mandated by federal. I, I don't know that you could ever come up with it.
And if we're talking about tax, the tax...
Tax dollars that we pay for, and there was a percentage was tuck out of our tax dollars to pay for the infrastructure, the sewer system, the updates, and the maintenance of our sewer system many, many years ago.
We can look at that, the sanitary district, when it was originally set up, was paid for through tax. That changed in code with the sanitary board and this body in nineteen eighty-one. It was switched to a user fee. I can try to look back and see, I'm not really sure, I mean, I can see what, how the tax was structured, but I would say that several things have changed. The user fee came on in nineteen eighty-one. Part of that was, the sanitary district is also larger than city boundaries, right? And that's how it operates under the sanitary board, instead of under this, like RP&amp;L operates under, under this board as well. But there's been several mandates that have occurred since nineteen eighty-one, down several regulatory pieces. The C.S.O. Long-Term Control Plan has been enacted as well. Then obviously, every time rates are reviewed, it looks at inflationary costs and, and things of that nature as well. So I can look back and pull up what the structure was pre-nineteen eighty-one, and supply that to this body, if that's asked for.
Is that what you want? Because you have to go back to the beginning of time.
Yeah.
Well, I came to Richmond in approximately nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight, somewhere in that area. And it was introduced somewheres in that area.
Nineteen fifty.
And Mr. Welch, and at the time, everybody on council shook their head. They didn't even know nothing about no tax dollars that went into it. I think you was still on the board, Mr. Parker.
I was on the board before you came here.
You were all thinking it.
I don't, we'll try to get you some type of a figure, but I doubt seriously it'll satisfy you.
This money has got, has went somewheres.
Right.
And it should be, instead of the, the people I happen to pay, and I'm all out for business, okay? But our sewer system is just getting worse and worse and worse, and costing more and more and more. And nobody seems to care on city council or anywhere else.
I take exception to that part, but go ahead.
But you go right down there to my place and look, they spent over, over a half a million dollars to put a tank in. Mr. Wel, Elijah did. Well, it didn't work, I guess, or whatever, he cut a big hole in the tank and shut, all of it goes over the hill now. It's grew up and weeds way over everybody's head. According to the city ordinance, we supposed to take care of our weeds and grass, correct?
Sure.
Okay, shouldn't the city have to, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, somebody needs to get on the, the sanitation department and make them do their jobs. You, do you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Wilson, I live here in the city. Get ready to write, because I've got some numbers for you that will boggle your mind. In nineteen eighty-one, the first rate was created, it was nine dollars and ten cents. During the next ten years, the rate increased in nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, and nineteen ninety-one, bringing the rate up to ten eighty-five. The next ten years, there were three rate increases in nineteen ninety-four that were effective for ninety-six, ninety-seven, and ninety-eight, bringing the rate up to twelve eighty. In two thousand and four, there was an increase of sixty percent, which is absolutely ridiculous. Imagine if gas jumped sixty percent, or your electric bill jumped sixty percent. But it passed, and the rate was now twenty forty-nine. In two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve, and two thousand and thirteen, the rate up, went up twenty-six percent, eighteen percent, seventeen percent, leaving the rate at thirty-five ninety-seven. In two thousand and fourteen, the people sitting in your seats had the right thing, and they said no to that increase. In two thousand and seventeen, there were three increases, fifteen point seven percent, seven point six six percent, eight point seven percent. That brought the rate up to forty-eight seventy-one. Now, mind you, it started at nine dollars and ten cents. In twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five, we saw thirteen seventy-five, five, fifty, five point seven five, and another five point seven five increase, bringing the rate up to fifty-five twenty-three. If the rate is increased at the, where are we looking at, six, six, and three?
Six, six, six.
Six, 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 and three. That would bring our rate up in twenty twenty-nine to sixty-seven forty-nine. And it was reported by Jeff Lane that that would, the bill would actually be a hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not sure where he got that figure, but that was in his news release this morning. So if you break it down, the nine dollars and ten cents has now jumped. If it just goes to the sixty-seven seventy-four, it's only gone up five hundred and forty-four percent. If it actually goes up to the hundred and fifty, wow, you know, no big deal. That's only hit the rate pair for fifteen hundred and forty-eight percent. The poverty level in this town is twenty-three percent. The rental in this town, the rental properties in this town are forty-two point four nine percent. How many times has the sanitation department billed landlords for past due bills? Numerous times, numerous times, you hear about it all the time. Somebody was five months behind, six months behind. Now the landlord is stuck with that bill because they skipped without paying their rent. You're going to make it harder on the renters, you're going to make it harder on the landlords, and you're going to kill the ratepayers. If this is for the industrial park, let the industrial park occupants pay for it. They're the ones benefiting from it, they're the ones using it. The residential customers are not. Lucinda, in your prayer, you said, "Represent the people who put us here."
Exactly.
Have you heard anybody say, "Oh, yes, please raise my rate"?
No.
One of the meetings that I went back and looked at, I'm almost thinking it was Doug that asked the representative from the sanitation department if the rate would drop off once the bond would pay. And he said, "It will never decrease." And I have a hard time understanding that. If you take out a loan for a project, and you pay that project off, you don't keep charging for that loan that's paid off. Yet that's exactly what we do every time. The bond gets paid off, the rate just keeps increasing. It has to stop, and you are the ones who can stop this. We're talking about a will tax, we're talking about a food and beverage tax. I happen to have a dollar left in my wallet. I'm going to leave that right here for when you do the air that you breathe tax. I want to be a little bit ahead on it.
I, I would like to just, just say one thing about your hundred and fifty dollar a month bill. It's a hundred and fifty dollars more per year for a forty, four thousand gallon user. So you're wrong on the monthly... Yeah, quite a bit.
I bet that jumps it up to close to seven hundred percent.
Could be.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll leave your dollar there. My name is Tim Long. There's a woman here that, she's here to complain about the same thing I dealt with ten years ago. I retired from the military in nineteen ninety-one, my wife is from Richmond. So I moved to the South Side to be close to her parents, South V Street and South Eleventh, South Twelfth, that area, it's all dead-end streets. Eight years ago, no, ten years ago, I bought a house right there on the corner of South V and South Eleventh. I spent a hoard of money fixing it up. The first time it rained, the basement of that building looked like a Niagara Falls. I had video of it, it's gone. But then I started researching why we had so much water coming down to that one house, because that was the house that caught it all. I found a print from nineteen seventy-three for storm sewers, it was approved by the city, but never put in. There are no storm sewers down there. And when the storm pipes fill up, I believe Eric over there can attest, it'll blow the lid right off the system. I complained to a man named Gerald at the sanitation department. I complained to a man named Gerald at the sanitation department. I took him the print, the videos, and everything I had, and two days later, they came and put curbs, but just around my house. Saved me an issue. Problem is, I own one more, more than one house there. I own two. The other one, every time it rains hard, basement floods. I've got three sump pumps in the basement of the house I live in now. That's the one on V. And I've got two and one on South 11th to avoid any issues with rising water. I don't mind the money going up or the cost going up. I mean, that's a factor doing business. If you want the industry to come, you got to help them by providing them with what they, what your systems have to be able to handle. Problem is, the problem I have is you need to fix the systems that the people are using, too. And a lot of people on the South Side, especially in the area where I live, when it rains, you know, the old saying, "When it rains, it pours," they have problems. I mean, I got a neighbor across the street, and he's replaced his floor joists numerous times since I've lived there. And now, he just replaced them in the kitchen. And I went over to talk to him today, and his floor is buckling. And that's caused by moisture. So I would appreciate it if the city would look at the South Side sanitation drainage area. I mean, you run everything to a ditch that runs right along the field on Boston Pike. All that water comes from up around 34th and that area. We can't handle it, and it's, it'll get worse. I would just appreciate if the city would look at that and try to improve our piping, our drain pipes and all that. Keep it away from our houses. We'd appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Here, I'm Belinda Miller.
Hold it down for you a second. There you go.
Sorry. I reside at 2048 South 12th Street. All of the water comes off of 13th Street because there's no storm drains in that area whatsoever. When it rains, it just comes down through the yards, and our houses get the blunt of it on 12th. And then 11th Street gets the worst of it because there's nowhere to go. I talked last year to a guy by the name Elijah Welch from the sanitation department. He was supposed to come down, get a meeting, and with everybody in the area. Never did that. I called him back, left numerous messages. Still today, I've never received a call back. So I feel like the increase for the sanitation shouldn't, like he said, rely on us that live down in that area or the people. If they're going to build them kind of places, then they need to pay for those. We shouldn't have to keep paying for something that we do not have, we do not use. So we don't have storm drains. So I'd like for you all, just like he said, look into it so that we can continue with our property and stuff instead of having to turn around and fix our houses because all the water runs up underneath it. You know, because it's going to be a mess if we have to go and hire an attorney or anything to get this done, because it's running our houses, and we have to continue to fix it up because no storm drains, because the sanitation refuses to put anything like that down there for us. We're at the end of the county. You know, they just leave us out there like nothing, you know? Everywhere else is getting fixed up, Hunter's Point, name it. Everywhere they build, they get sent, you know, they get storm drains. Why don't they fix what's already been there for years? And we wouldn't have such a mess down there.
Elijah, would you meet with this lady before the, right afterwards and set up a meeting?
Oh, I finally get to meet him in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Misty Hollis, 2724 Northwest A. I wish there was a third category, because it's not so much for against, just kind of a memory, going down memory lane when I was in your shoes. And I want to kind of just ask a few questions, because what rings to me as promises made, promises kept. And the 2014 period of time that Mr. Wilson was speaking of, Ron, Mayor, and I, and a few others, were on council at that time. So those were difficult times. But I remember, I think it was you, Mr. Parker, when we look at all of the bonds that we had outstanding with the sanitation department, that was one of the things that you actually did research on, went back on when a bond was paid off. There was actually, I think, either a motion made at some point that we would, we would let that fee sunset? I know I'm asking you to dent your memory bank, but does that sound familiar?
Yes, we asked for that to be sunset, but I don't think it ever has.
Okay. So is it possible that this council could look at that again? That went, and I don't know, what is our outstanding bond debt right now with sanitation? Do we have three or four outstanding bonds?
I think we have three.
Four? You have four? We have six. We have six, and so this would be number seven? Ow. Well.
Wow.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, maybe y'all need to do a little research to see how many bonds we have outstanding when they're going to sunset, where the fees are attached to those. I hate for you to do more work. But I just, I guess what I would consider is, not saying I'm opposed to what this conversation and what we need to do in the industrial park, but carrying so much debt with sanitation, and if there could be, again, the promise made when it sunsets that we're going to revert back. So, just my two cents.
And I have, I don't think anybody up here would disagree with that either.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I mean, I'll let y'all speak to that, but just going back to my memory lane. And then I will invite you, because I'll be kind of what you're doing Wednesday night when we have the will tax conversation and the library bond conversation. You're welcome to come to that side, too, across the street. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Misty.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Zane, and I live on the South 11th Street of Richmond, just like Belinda and Tim has said. We get all the water from 13th Street. And I do have the videos on my phone and pictures from this year, or April last year. And I have talked to Elijah and never got back with me after I went up here and showed him the videos. And I just don't see us paying $6 a month on a bill that we don't even have.
Have you ever, excuse, just a curious question. Have you ever gone to the sanitary?
Yes.
Board?
Yeah, I've talked to them.
No, but to the board?
No.
Okay. I, I would suggest that. I mean.
I mean, I've been fighting it for five years, and nobody can get any answers anywhere.
Okay.
Just like he said, he's got prints from '73, and it was never done.
Yes, sir.
He's my neighbor, and I've been to the board. I've talked to Gerald and all of them. I had them all out on the corner where I live. They're aware that there's powerful there, but they do a temporary fix, the curbs around my house, because I was, I was the squeaky wheel of stuff. But nobody else is fixed. I can tell you right now that you could probably get in a kayak on 13th Street and ride that sort of path.
Yeah, I mentioned so.
By two houses. I have a fence, because I have dogs. There is a clear flow path of water, and mine is the only one. I mean, you could look down the street, Eric, it looks like rapids coming across the street out of his yard.
I mean, it lifts the sewer lid up off the street.
It's really, it's that, I mean. And we have been speaking to people. I've been, well, I got curbs eight years ago, so obviously, at least eight years. But I know, I wish I could have found that print, because 1973, an approved print for storm sewers in that area. And the print showed the streets and the markings and the locations where they would have been, but we don't have it. So obviously, somebody dropped the ball somewhere. I hope you guys pick it up.
Elijah would like to speak to that, too, I think.
Yeah, I think I can add a little bit of, and I'll meet with all you guys afterward. I think I can add a little bit of context to the project as a whole, and really, stormwater projects that we go through. We created a matrix, so every complaint or project that's identified on a stormwater side gets ranked. And it's, it's environmental impacts, it's damage that's, that it's causing, it's the cost of the project per person or per, basically trying to rank, you know, how much is, is the solution? The number of years that it's, it's been going on or that we've known about it. And I, I feel like I'm missing some, but the idea is, we don't have enough money to go fix every stormwater problem right now. So we have a pot of money, and every year, we budget from that. But we try to go down that list from what's ranked the highest to the lowest. And some projects, like that one in particular, is a large project. We're talking 750,000 plus for, for some kind of solution. And I'm not sure of the 1973 drawing. That's, that may have been something that Gerald in the past had, had discussed or seen. I, I'm not on that one. But that's, because of the size of the project, that's why there's not a, a project right now that's, that's, that's being, being constructed. But it is on the list, and I don't know where that one in particular right now ranks. But that's, that's in general how we do things. We try to, to take the bias out of it by using that matrix, and that way, we can fairly implement projects based on need and then the dollars that we have.
Mr. President?
Stringel.
Then, over time, we get to these projects, right? I mean.
Correct, correct. As, as, as we do projects, those come off the matrix, and we go down, down the list. So, yeah, we, we do projects every year, and the big ones just take longer to do because, I mean, you have to bond it. It's not usually a cash-based project, so.
But this one is on the list?
It is on the list and ranked. I just, off the top of my head, I don't remember where it's at, so.
Thank you.
There, there are probably 40-some at least projects on the list, along with, I don't know how many that's already been done, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak against this?
You know, if they can find the money to do for all these Midwest and all of that, why can't they help the people? You know, we've asked, we've talked, but for some reason, they can't help and find the money to help the residents, but they want to go out here and help all the factories and all that? Well, make them pay for it. You know, don't be putting it off onto us. You know, they should at least come down there and put, like, around Tim's house, you know, they put curbs up. If they would come down them streets there that's dead-end and put curbs and stuff up, maybe that may help with the water from going into our homes and stuff. You know, like he asked, you know, where is it at? And he said, "40 projects." Well, I've been in the area since 2003. Do you think they're going to come down there and help me? No, they're not, because they've got so many projects in, in front of it. So we'll see where it goes from here.
Thank you.
If they can't find the money now, let's see if he can find the money later.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Sounds to me like we have many unanswered questions, and I think we're going to put this, hold this until our next meeting and see if we get, can't get some of these questions answered.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
Probably not welcomed, but I think that if I'm not mistaken, approximately 20% of our general fund budget is made up of interdepartmental charges from sanitary and RP&amp;L. And I think, to me, that's a hidden tax that's on top of these rates, and I think all this has to be looked at. I think that sanitary pays for our code enforcement department, which I'm a little bit confused about, because that also ends up on the rates. And so it seems like we've disseminated the general fund budget to our income-based services, and I think that all of this needs to be evaluated into the future and the cost, the true cost of this to the taxpayers.
Additional comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for our record, I wanted to confirm that public hearing has been closed, or do you intend to leave that open?
What is council's pleasure? Keep it open or close it?
Leave it open.
I think leave it open.
Leave it open, okay. So council will leave this on second reading and leave the comments open for the public for the next meeting even.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just, I guess I'd like to make the point that the issue that these residents are having is, is not really the issue of this ordinance, but, but it is something that needs to be addressed.
Yep.
Obviously. But I don't know if we want to separate that or...
I think we need to take comment during the hearing on what's before us exclusively.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Comments in the future will be strictly on this ordinance alone, just to pay, just the increase, and not on the, the problems that we do have, because those can be taken care of by the sanitary board and not, they're not our responsibilities. It's the responsibility of the sanitary board. Our responsibility would be whether this increase goes forward or is denied.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to say, though, I really appreciate everyone speaking and sharing their concerns. It's very important for us to hear that from everyone, because it does help us formulate decisions that we make, and it's very important that your voices are heard, and I encourage you in the future to continue this. And Misty, I want to thank you for your information that you brought that was very insightful. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say what I've, I heard what you all said, but I just want to, for clarification for those who came up here and spoke against, the reason why, for your comments, correct me, one of you all correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason for your comments about and your complaint is because you're against users paying for the upgrade of the infrastructure in the Midwest industrials. That, I, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head, make sure I've got this correctly in my head. I just, if one of you all can clarify that.
I'm not against the subway, the, the, you know, for a change, but I would appreciate the upgrade to the infrastructure that we have to deal with, because the water just flows in our, just like a river when it rains.
I, I get that, but that's what I, I was, when this gentleman, yeah, you got your hand up back there, and, yeah, when he got, and is that what you were trying to convey? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get clarification for me, because I have to consider everything when it comes to voting. And I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying, and I understand what sanitation is saying and what the E D C is saying, but I'm trying to just get all my ducks in a row. Okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any last comments? Mr. President? Mr. Purcell?
Yes. If we look back two years and the four projected years forward, we're looking at almost a 40% increase in your sanitary bills. And some people may think that's not a big deal, but I-
sanitation is saying and what the EDC is saying. But I'm trying to just get all my ducks in a row. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any last comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Purcell?
Yes. If we look back two years and the four projected years forward, we're looking at almost a 40% increase in your sanitary bills. And some people may think that's not a big deal, but I do because I know no one in here is going to see 40% raise in over seven years in their income.
Mr. President? I don't understand how we get to 40% from 6, 6, and 3.
Well, go back the other two years. I said seven years. We just did 13 and 6.
On the bill, I can remember when a sanitation bill and a water bill was mine. Everybody, I believe the city council said, "Oh, we need to separate this so we..." The money for the city for the sanitation was ours. And when he did that, the water bill was $40, and then all of a sudden, the sanitation bill was $40. But when they were combined, it was like $45, but it doubled. I mean, only a fool would say, look at the bill and say, "Oh, they doubled on me." And it's done that ever since. And I don't have a problem paying the bill. But problem I have is, I've been complaining for 10 years. I'm sure Eric's complained a few times, and the young lady's complained a few times, that we have a problem, and they come down and do a temporary fix, or not a temporary fix, but a... I can't use the language here, but it's not a fix. All you're doing is camouflaging the issue for one person, which was me, and I appreciate that. But I got two houses there, and the other one is just hammered, and Eric's house gets hammered. We can't handle replacing our floor joists and, you know, repairing the water damage that happens on a regular basis down there. And you want to spend more money on this industrial park, which is good for the city, good for us. But, you know, we need help too, you know? I appreciate your listening.
Thank you.
You mentioned the fact that you don't mind paying that bill. I hate it. Final comments from council? Is there any, Miss Lain, any persons to come before us at this time?
Move for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.